I'd like to call this study session to order this evening. And we will be hearing from Dr. Davidson from Pitt State University.
I'm up.
You're up.
Okay. My name is Michael Davidson. And I am with Kels College of Business. I was asked to have a presentation on the importance of housing markets in economic growth and the state of the housing markets in Pittsburgh. First, I want to talk a little bit about a study we did at Kels in which we looked at 536 cities, actually, we ended up with 511 cities. And we looked at the housing markets. And we looked at the periods of 1990s and 2000s. And we related that to economic growth. Now, if you look at the screen, you can see here, the first column shows the growth of these areas on average in the 1990s. The second column shows the growth of the cities that had flexible housing markets. And you can see that cities that had flexible housing markets had rent growth of 49% during the decade of the 90s compared to 58%, 58.4%. Now, the population, though, increased much faster in those cities. It increased 15.2% compared to only 3.9%. Employment increased 25.7% compared to 17.7%. And wages increased 42% compared to 38.1%. So in the 90s, cities with flexible housing markets did much better.
Excuse me, what is your definition of flexible housing market?
Well, we look at how much rent has to grow in order to introduce 10% increase in housing supply. So if you have two cities, and say both have 10% increase in housing supply, and say City A had to have 30% increase in rents in order to generate the 10% increase in housing supply, but the City B had to have 100% increase in rents in order to generate the same increase in housing supply of 10%. Then we can safely say that the city that had to increase rent 100% has less flexible housing markets. There's something there that makes it difficult for builders to build. Now, if that is all right, I would ask you to ask me questions at the end of the presentation. If that is all right, because it's a momentum and my message is building up throughout the presentation. Now, if you look at if you look at 2000s, then you can see that cities that had flexible housing markets had population growth of 10.1% compared to 1.3% for cities that did not have flexible housing markets. Employment actually declined 1.9% due to the recession, but it declines much less than in cities that did not have flexible housing markets. And you can see wages also increased faster. It increased 32% during the 2000s compared to 31.3%. Now, this is an empirical observation on the performance of these cities. And we can safely say that difficult regulatory environment and rigid local housing markets have a significant impact on all growth. Now, another thing that caught our attention at Kels was a study that came out by the Census. And it stated that 65.4% of the jobs in Pittsburgh are filled by commuters. And that is amazing. Of course, that is due to the regional standing somewhat of the city in Southeast Kansas. But only 34.6% of the people that work in Pittsburgh live in Pittsburgh, according to the Census. So we decided to look better into that. And I got the information. And if you look at the trend over time-
Did you go back to that other slide you had on there?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
Got it.
Good. Now, so I got the information from them, and I looked at the trend over time. And you can see that in 2002, 58.3% of the jobs in Pittsburgh were filled by commuters. It increased to 63.9% in 2006. And then it peaked in 2010 at 66.4%, which is incredible. And then in 2014, it declined a little bit, but it's way, way too high, at 65.4%. Now, if you look at the parents in a little more detail, you can see that people are now driving from farther away. Commuting time is increasing because the cities that are adjacent to Pittsburgh or in the proximity, like Frontneck, Girard, Armond, Forscott, can see in 2002, 11.7% of the jobs in Pittsburgh were filled by people that lived in these cities. In 2006, 11.8%. In 2010, 11.6%. And then in 2014, only 10.9%. So either they are working in their own city or somewhere else. Now, if you look at the economic indicators, then since 2010, or in 2010-15 period, then population increased half a percent in the city of Pittsburgh. Now, in the metropolitan area, the Pittsburgh metropolitan area, the number of jobs increased 2.1%. We don't have an estimate for number of jobs just in the city. But most of these jobs would probably have been created in the city. So there will probably be a higher job growth in the city. And these jobs that we created increased the value added locally by 12.4%. The wealth, the local wealth. Now, an average company pays around 60 to 7% of the value added, the wealth they create, in compensation. So a portion of that, a big portion of that, is going out of the city. Then you can imagine the resources that are lost in property taxes and sales taxes and so forth. Now, if you look at the housing market, and this is according to Jones Heritage Realtors, in a 12-month period ending June 17, 2014, three new homes were sold. One during the period ending in June 17, 2015, and eight new homes sold in the period ending in June 2016. Now, there are almost 26,000 people that live in Pittsburgh. And it really does not make much sense that only between one and eight new homes being sold annually. So that is kind of an indicator on some kind of rigidity or in flexibility. Okay, thank you. Now, Kels College of Business was asked to work on the Mid-City Renaissance Project with the city and the chamber. And we decided to look better into these commuting trends because they are of great interest. Now, with the help of Blake Benson, the president of the Chamber of Commerce in Pittsburgh, we did a survey on all the major employers in the area. And I believe we got like 498 responses to the survey. So it's a good sample. Now, in our survey, we found out that 70.9% of the respondents that worked in Pittsburgh commuted in. And only 29.1% lived inside Pittsburgh. This is pretty close to the Census information. So we think it represents the true state of Pittsburgh and commuting patterns in Pittsburgh. Now, you can see that 41.2% of the respondents commuted in from outside Pittsburgh, but within Crawford County, 13.2% commuted in from outside the county, but from the state somewhere. And 16.5% commuted in from other states, mostly the Jordan area and Northeast Oklahoma. if you look at the people, this 29.1% in the survey that lived in Pittsburgh, then you can see they tend to be young. Now, being young also means that they don't have very high incomes. So most of them have lower incomes. Now, if you look at the flip side, the people that commute, they tend to be older. And they tend to have much higher incomes. And that is bad news. Now, if you look at the people that commute as being the universe, then you can see that 58.2% commuted in from outside Pittsburgh, but from Crawford County. Now, we are just talking about the people that commute. 18.7% from outside Crawford, but from Kansas. And averaging 23% from other states. Now, here is the thing. Nobody is going to have a long-distance commute unless he's commuting for a good job. Now, 53.2% of the respondents stated that they did not live in Pittsburgh because of the housing market. 38.8% said it was because they wanted to live in their hometown or in a rural setting. And 8% wanted to live or did not live here because of other reasons. Now, if you dig better into the housing reasons, then you can see 15% said that the reason they didn't live here was high housing prices. 15.6% is because of high property taxes. 9.2% because of lack of nice neighborhoods, like housing additions and so forth. And 13.5% were unable to find a desirable house at the same, in a similar neighborhood, say, like in Kels Junction or whatever. Now, this does not mean that housing prices in Pittsburgh need to be lower. Does not mean that. It just means, you see, what gives value to anything is in the mind of people. And somehow, the value of the area has to be built in order to attract more people into the area that live here. Now, if you look at people that had less than 30,000, then remember, a big chunk of them live in Pittsburgh, but 59.2% live outside Pittsburgh. 52.9% of the people with less than 30,000 state that they are not living in Pittsburgh because of the housing situation. 36.5% because they want to live in a hometown or rural setting. And then 10.6% for other reasons. Now, let's look at 30,000 to 60,000. Look at the trend. You can see that the higher the income, the more likely people that work here, the more likely it is that they are going to live outside the city. 67.4% of people in income range 30,000 to 60,000 live outside Pittsburgh, and 32.6% inside. Now, 48.4% of these respondents said that they lived outside the city because of the housing situation and housing markets. 47%, this was the biggest income range, that wanted to live in their hometown or rural setting. And then you had 4.5% wanting to live outside Pittsburgh for other reasons. Now, again, look at the trend. If you look at the 60,000 to 90,000, then you can see that even more, bigger chunk of the people are living outside the city. Averaging 82% of people in that income range respondents in the survey said that they work here but live outside the city. And 55.7% of them say it's because of housing issues. And 35.9% because they want to live in a hometown or rural setting. Now, if you look at people that have 90,000 plus, then 74.5% want to live, I mean, 74.5% commuted into the city for the job. Now, interesting is that 25.5% of that income group lives in the city, only 25.5%. And that's the same percentage that lives outside the state. And then you have 34% or so living in the county, but outside Pittsburgh. Now, and then you have 14.9% living in other counties in Kansas and commuting in. And they say, actually, 55.6% of the respondents in that income range said that the reason why they don't live in Pittsburgh is because of housing issues. 32.6% because they want to live in a hometown or rural setting. And 11.8% because of other reasons. Now, there is a common thread to this, or factor to this, and that is housing. Housing stands out definitely as being the major reason of why people decide not to live in Pittsburgh. And like I said, if 60 to 70%, which is an average nationwide percent for the amount of value added and wealth creation that firms create goes into conversation, then you can see that this represents a significant leakage of wealth, income, property taxes, retail sales, sales taxes, and so forth, out of the city. Now, we also asked for comments. And 17.3%, by the way, there were like 200 or 300 people that left a comment. Not everyone left a comment. 17.3% wanted more activities. 22% wanted more restaurants. 17.3% said we have to improve the infrastructure. 21% wanted more shopping and had some type of suggestion. And then you can see housing here, 6.5%. And that was mostly, it had a lot to do with coding enforcement. And they wanted a better coding enforcement. And they said maybe that the neighbor had half of the engine out of the hood of the car on the driveway and sped like that maybe for three months or something. And they were unhappy about that. So there were comments like that. And only 6.1% said it had to do with the job situation, which obviously means that there seem to be plenty of jobs. And they are happy with the job, since these are all respondents. so going through this, we concluded that the state of the housing markets are very important in economic growth. And two, that the city of Pittsburgh would benefit from a more flexible housing market. Now, this concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
I'm still not clear on what a flexible housing market. So if you were telling us what we should do to make this better, what could we do as a group?
To make this better?
Mm-hmm. To fix it. How do we fix it?
Well, like I said, you know, I don't think housing prices have to decline. And they are not going to decline. And I don't think that is the issue. I think, for example, a better coding enforcement, having housing additions because people sort themselves according to their preferences. And if you have housing additions where you have mostly middle-income live or mostly high-income or whatever, then people like to live in their housing additions among their peers. And we don't have anything like that. Some of the comments said that there were no, say, spec houses. They were not able to see any spec houses. some of them said that compared to the same neighborhood and where they used, where they live, they would not be able to find the house that had the same quality. Some of the respondents said that, if I remember correctly, that what was that? Have you had And, you know, I read the housing study that was done like three or four years ago. And that reminded me of something that I read there. I believe Wilson Builders said the best place to build in Pittsburgh was just outside the city limit, if I remember correctly. And so, I mean, I guess that I have really not dug into the reasons and what we need to do, and I have not been asked to do that. But I've been working on this, and that's why I have this information.
Very helpful.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Well, I thought it was interesting presentation that more people live outside the city than live inside of the city and work. And there's no question in my mind, that's because it's cheaper to build a house outside the city. Another thing you said, the people in the 30,000 income group live inside the city. And those are the people that are paying for this infrastructure.
Absolutely.
So when you have the $65,000 to $90,000 jobs that work in the city and live outside the city, they don't pay for any of this stuff that their lower-income people are paying for. So that explains it to me that, I think taxes is one thing that keeps people living outside the city. The housing that they could build inside the city is going to cost them more. The same house they're going to build outside the city. So naturally, they're going to build outside the city. So that's where I see this whole study you done.
Yeah, I don't know about that, you know, the tax situation or whatever. I haven't compared that. So I don't know about that. But I know, for example, in Stillwater, which is a college town too, they have, you know, similar housing prices. And I think they, although they have a problem like that too, but you have much bigger portion of their jobs filled by people that live in Stillwater. And you could see the trend that has been increasing since 2002. The number of people, in 2002, it was, what, 52% of jobs in Pittsburgh that were filled by commuters. And it went up to 68%, if I remember correctly. And then it declined to like 65% or something. I think the city has been doing a tremendous job lately in order to make the city more cosmopolitan and more living city. I know there have been a lot of investment in infrastructure and fiber-optic cable in order to bring the city up to the 21st century and to be a hip city. and I know, I read in the newspaper about the biking trails and all the restaurants that have been coming to the city. So I think that there's an ongoing effort. And the fourth and Broadway project, I think is fantastic. And I really like the concept of having, kind of like, in some of these hip cities that people like to live in, this loft concept on the second floor where people can live. And I think that there has been an effort that has been started. And I frankly think that the city benefits from a leadership and is lucky to have the leadership that can see that and is working on these issues right now. And I think that's really good.
Hey. Another question. Earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that part of the problem was our regional standing.
Say it again.
You said something earlier in your presentation about part of the problem with people wanting to live here had something to do with our regional standing. So what is our regional standing?
Well, in the 99s, I looked at it in the 99s. And as it relates to the increase that is needed in order to produce the same housing supply on average, then Pittsburgh ranked in the bottom 10%.
Is that because we're not producing enough housing?
Because we needed much more increase in order to produce the same housing supply in other cities.
And then also, when you said they made the comment that the best place to build was just outside the city limits, did they give any reasons for that comment?
All the reasons? I say it again, sir.
So you said that when asked, people said the best place to build was just outside the city limits in Pittsburgh.
If I remember correctly, that's what I read.
But was there anything? I've never seen that housing study, so was there any-
Oh, you've never seen that housing study?
No. Was there any comments as to why that was the best place to build?
They thought about, of course, it was done like four years ago, I believe. Something like that. And they, in that study, if I remember correctly, they said that, you know, the permit activity was difficult and costly, and it was difficult to get a lot, if I remember correctly. And, but I would have to read that again, but it's in- And, but I would have to read that again, but it's in the housing study. You know, so it's on the Wilson Builders. It was a-
That's basically what it said. I mean, he's right. It's, you don't have to have a perm, I mean, it's just, you know, being in a city is different than being in the county. You've got restrictions and there's a lot of, I guess, what you'd call paperwork. And you can jump, if you're right outside the city limit, then you can easily drive in. Which is one reason we have relied so heavily on sales tax because our property tax just doesn't perform because we have so many people that live just outside the city. But the sales tax, and you'll see it today in the presentation, has actually surpassed the property tax for our revenue generator. And it's earmarked to all of our core services because that's what we need to generate the money to provide them. So it's an interesting, it's, there's a lot of information and you can read it a lot of ways. But it's, there's a lot of commonalities.
Can we get a copy of this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like one.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I'd like to have a copy to really sit down and look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any concluding remarks? I appreciate all you've done. I know this was part of the grant. And I think it's consistent with our housing study and our retail study and our commuter study. So, good stuff.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Okay, I'm going to close this study session. We'll take a short recess and be ready to start the meeting.